I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Decanter.
Here.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Menon.
Here.
Mayor Holliday.
Present.
Dr. Hockeiser.
Here.
Mr. Raven.
Here.
Mr. Callen.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Thank you. And I would just like to remind all school committee members that if you would like to make statements during our school committee meeting, would you kindly please raise your hand and be recognized by the vice chair? I've gotten a little informal over the last couple of meetings, so if you would be so kind, if we need to get back to a little bit more structure, thank you very much. Mr. Menon.
Sure. Do we have any warrants, Mr. Cole?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Mr. Cole for reading the warrants.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We have three warrants. The first warrant, I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $22,249.2 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
The second warrant, I move that the following name bills and payrolls of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $27,162.98 be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the schools account. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
And the final warrant, I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $126,157.96 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you very much. We have a set of minutes from our last meeting on May 20th, Monday. Do I have motion to move them?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, additions, amendments, changes? Yes. Mayor Holliday.
In the section on -- hold on one second. After the students presented that wonderful visual arts section, Mrs. Kennedy, you write, "Steve Cole," and I think this is, there's an extra "shouldn't" here. The budget money was and should that should be spread more evenly. Could you take out one of the "shoulds" there?
What page is that on?
Third page, first third of the --
After the visual arts information in the first, you have in bold, "Steve Cole" was the first one to make a comment after. See the first sentence?
Thank you, sir.
Asked what the impression of the budget money was and should that should be spread more.
Okay.
It's just a little awkward. If you could just take out one of the "shoulds," I think that would work. The other thing that I think in the policy discussion that Principal Wolf and Assistant Principal Testa presented, I think something is missing from here that we talked about removing the administrative failure from the existing policy, and it's not stated there. And I think that that should be included. People agree with me?
Yes.
All right. So we should put that where it talks about, Mike Testa read the current policy regarding administrative failure and recommended the following changes. Or recommended changes, because he doesn't list the following there.
And what do you want me to add?
Under the section where it says, you'll see the NHS 2013, 2019, 20 student handbook updates and approval, you'll see Nick Decanter starts, makes a statement from the policy subcommittee on the attendance policy, then you see Mike Testa's name. Could you add, "Read the current policy regarding administrative failure and recommended changes." So if you could just add that in there.
Okay.
And then there was, then if you go down to discussion, I asked, at what point do you intervene with the student, you know, when they start exhibiting attendance issues? They reach out to parents, they do automated mailing, but I don't think that was, I think it's they make a direct call after the third absence. So that's different than an automated mailing, which sounds more like a robo-call. Do you see that?
Yeah.
Under discussion, Mayor Holliday asked, "At what point do you intervene when the student get to kids sooner and reach out to parents after the third absence?"
That was on the middle of page three.
Okay. All right. Yes.
After the Mike Testa statement that you added right below that, and take out, do an automatic mailing?
Okay.
And state, "Call parents directly after third absence."
Thank you. I would just add one thing as well. In the interest of capturing what I thought was an interesting idea, when Ralph Orlando gave his public comment about Val and Sal, he also suggested that we think about whether or not to retain weighted courses, waiting courses.
Who was that?
Ralph Orlando.
That would be in the public comment section.
Public comment section, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
So as amended, are we in favor of approving the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? We're set. We've now come to our period of public comment. If there's anybody in our vast audience who would like to come up and share public comments, if you would sign in and keep those comments to about two minutes. Seeing none, I'm going to turn it over to our school rep.
All right.
Is this like your last meeting?
I believe so for the school year.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. All right. So first and foremost, as many of you know, the high school graduation was this past weekend. I'd like to personally thank Mayor Holliday, Mr. Gallagher, and members of the school committee and the city council for attending. And to the school committee, thank you for your continued support. It goes a long way. And then congratulations to the class of 2019. This Thursday, we will hold our underclassmen awards assembly and step-up day, where the juniors become seniors, the sophomores become juniors, and the freshmen become sophomores. It's always an exciting time, and we get to really reflect and see that, wow, time is moving fast. It really flies. Last week, the eighth grade, which is the NOC, they participated in their annual trip to Washington, DC, and I have a lot of friends who have siblings that went, and they said it was a blast. This is a great experience for the students. They got to see many of the monuments and museums that are part of our nation's capital. And next Thursday, the eighth grade is going to be taking place, graduation. And we are very excited to welcome many of them to the high school. Since February, we've had a team of students, teachers, and parents at the high school meeting to discuss ways to improve our school climate. Part of their work has been to create a survey that will help us to monitor the pulse of students and teachers across the school year in hopes of bringing about positive change. And this week, students will be given the survey, and they will be, and this will help the climate team to address any problems and continue to move forward in a positive light. Next week, we start our final exams at the high school, and as a reminder, these are going to be started a half hour later than previously, which is a pretty good thing for a lot of students. And then finally, I just received a word from Mr. Wolf, hot off the press, that the girls tennis team, they were down 2-0. They put on a ferocious comeback and ended up winning 3-2. So great job today. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bruce, before we go on, we don't have anybody, we're not recognizing anybody tonight?
No.
So I just wanted to shout out, it's that time of year where endless amounts of teachers are putting in deep overtime, doing things like the DC trip, and I don't know what you guys call taking the seniors for the night after graduation, I don't know what we call that, but
Senior celebration.
Senior celebration.
The haunting.
And senior week, and whatever goes on at all the schools, it's just, it's amazing to see the dances, the graduation, the, all that shtick. So collectively, I just wanted to publicly thank them for that extra effort.
Thank you.
Because there's a lot of
Duly noted.
Absolutely noted. That's kind of why they've been working so hard, although they appreciate being recognized, but another night out.
Can you hold that for next meeting, please? We have, I can turn it over to Sean now.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to have Emily Russen and Christina Gentili to present kind of a combo special education and literacy presentation, because they have been going hand in hand with some of the big initiatives in the district.
Thank you. Thank you. You guys?
I hope so. I like that.
If you want to sit. If you want to sit. Okay. If you want to sit, Christina, I'll flip the slide.
Okay. Yes, I will. Yeah. Okay. So thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Christina Gentili, I'm the Director of Student Services.
Emily Russen, Literacy Coordinator.
So we decided to try to do something a little bit different. You're going to be getting sort of a twofer. We felt that it was important to provide you with an update on special education statistics, which I will go through. I have several slides on that, but then we also, Emily and I, wanted to sort of do a joint presentation circling back to the presentation that we did last year on literacy and interventions that we've been doing for students with language-based learning disabilities. So that really is kind of the meat of the presentation. Next slide. This is an overview of the presentation, so I will, I'll go through and I'll review some special education data, and then do a brief review of kind of trends and areas of focus, but we really wanted to kind of take a minute to look at, or several minutes, to look at, as I said before, kind of the language-based learning disabilities and the work that's been done in that area. This data is accurate as of last week. There are still actually quite a number of IEP meetings between now and the end of the year, next week, but the numbers really shouldn't change significantly. So this is a comparison for this school year, last school year, and the school year before in terms of the percentage of students on IEPs. The first number that you see is the number of students on IEPs at each school. The second number is the percentage of all students on IEPs. And then the last one shows the percentage of students at the particular school that are on IEPs. So if, for some reason, if the number of students at the Breznerhan were to go way up, that would be accounted with that number. So, and then at the bottom, you can see our district percentages. So obviously, the percentage has been going up. Last year, it was at 17.9%, about the same time of the year, because I did my presentation in June last year, and now we're up to 19%. The state average has also been increasing. Last year, the state average was 17.7%, and the most recent Department of Ed information indicates that it's 18.1. And in a minute, I will talk to you about the disability categories. And you'll see at the high school level, that number has been, you know, that's sort of definitely the lowest percentage of students on IEPs, which is not atypical. More often than not, you tend to see a higher percentage of students needing more intensive interventions at the younger level, and if those interventions are successful, by the time that they get to high school, we really can kind of taper those down because the students have what they need to be successful.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The jump in students, like say at the Breznerhan, are those students who, do we know if those are students who weren't identified previously, or is that a result of new students coming to the district?
That's a great question. I have, so at the end of the school year, after all the meetings have taken place, Dawn Clay, who is amazing, compiles all of the data in terms of, not exactly to answer your question, in terms of whether the students are new, but she looks at where the referrals come from. So whether it's a parent referral, a referral through RTI, and the number of, or the percentages of students found eligible, I can definitely look at that data. I think that that would be worthwhile. I would guess that it's probably mostly students who have already been with us, but I can't say for sure, but it's certainly worth looking into.
We had an extra kindergarten class this past year, too, though, right? So that would have been another class of kids that
Yeah. Yeah, but that is a good question.
Okay. I have a quick question also on that. So the Breznerhan includes all students, including preschool?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
And sorry, is there something that happens at the school break? Like I'm looking between the Mullen and the Mullen and the NOC. That's a dramatic decrease. So is there like, so would you measure like a fifth grader who gets their IEP, their annual done like in the spring?
Right.
That becomes a NOC student? So the decrease of the NOC would have to be those students whose meetings are taking place starting in sixth grade, right?
So what, so the Mullen number represents the percentage of fourth and fifth graders on IEPs?
Right.
And the NOC number represents sixth, seventh, and eighth graders on IEPs?
Right.
So it certainly could be that you have, you know, I think, to my point earlier when I was talking about high school, you tend to see more students start to come off of IEPs in seventh and eighth grade, not, this is just me sort of speaking more informally, but you tend to not see it as, quite as much in sixth grade. I think the jump from fifth to sixth grade is a big one, and a lot of kids need support, especially around executive functioning and whatnot.
So if they, just organically, if they could almost go the other way, that as the kids get more classes and the work becomes more intense, you might have increasing identifications.
Yeah.
It's interesting. We're doing something right there.
Yeah. And well, and certainly you do see some students who, I think, and we can kind of speak to this maybe a little bit with the reading piece, you do see some students who maybe have had a situation where they've kind of been getting by, and they've had some weaknesses in reading, but as the material gets more and more difficult for them in the upper grades, that it just, that's really when the tension starts to happen, but if they have been getting proper supports, they really, it should be remediated by that point.
Thank you.
I also wanted to give you some data on 504 accommodation plans. So a 504 accommodation plan, just as a reminder, is when a student has a disability and they need accommodations to access the curriculum rather than an IEP, which involves specialized instruction, goals, and sometimes modified content. So I've included the data from last year. You can see that there is somewhat of a higher percentage of students now at the high school on 504 plans. And interestingly, an increase as well at the Mullen. Quite frankly, I am not sure what accounts for that. The high school piece did not surprise me, because Patricia Blackstock, who's the 504 coordinator there, we've been having ongoing discussions about the increase in anxiety and kind of the social emotional realm, which we've talked about here before. But overall, the overall increase has been from 7% to 7.6%, which I don't think is significant. So this is a breakdown of the, all of the students in the district who are on IEPs, and what the primary disability category is. I always tell parents, you know, the primary disability category is something that the state requires us to identify. In no way is it meant to kind of sum up a child, you know, we all, you know, many of us have kids ourselves, and profiles can be really complex, but it is helpful, I think, to kind of track the percentages over the years. And as you can see, what is interesting about this year, so last year, there was this kind of pretty significant increase from emotional, in the realm of emotional disabilities. And then what's interesting this year is that if you look the second category down, learning disability, it's gone up from 25.9 to 29.7%, which I think to me was not surprising in terms of, I think we've been doing a lot of work around kind of identifying students with learning disabilities, and we've been doing a better job helping teachers, giving teachers the tools that they need to test and evaluate students. So I think in some ways, this is a positive, this is a positive thing.
So are you catching more students with dyslexia? That was a big conversation we had here last spring.
I am going to say that I believe that that's the case. Yes. Yes. I also wanted to give you some data on the students who we have outplaced, as well as our referral numbers. So we continue to have a similar number of students outplaced. It's about 27. This is not a significant change to prior years. In prior years, it's hovered around 26, 27. And, but the cost of outplacement, and I believe that the superintendent has kind of spoken about this a little bit, the cost of outplacement continues to rise along with transportation. Transportation has been, you know, something that I know is being discussed at the state level. It's not reimbursable under Circuit Breaker. So transportation has really been a challenge and continues to be a challenge. As I mentioned to Mr. Hockeiser, we're still in the process of collecting the end-of-year referral data, but the data that we have now does show an increase in the Breznerhan and Mullen in our referral numbers, which again, is not necessarily surprising to me. Early childhood's referral numbers were lower, and early intervention, we get most of our referrals from early intervention. That's not something, that really depends on a number of different factors, birth rate, things along those lines. So to kind of recap some of the trends, there has been an increase in the percentage of students on IEPs at the Breznerhan. There's also growth in the percentage of students on IEPs at the Mullen. The high school and the NOC are remaining relatively consistent. There's been an increase in the percentage of students who have been diagnosed with a learning disability, and then the category of emotional disability has remained somewhat consistent.
The increase in, can you go back one? The increase in percentage of students who have a learning disability, is some of that because the criteria have widened, too? Like compared to previous years, like, you know, there used to be very few kids on autism spectrum, and now it's a lot bigger?
Right. Right.
Is it a similar type of
That's a really, that's a really good question. I think the short answer is no, but I also think in a way, somewhat similar to when, at the very beginning, when sort of autism started becoming, you know, sort of first became in everyone's awareness.
Yeah.
At first, the students who had sort of glaring forms of autism, those were the kiddos who were maybe on everyone's radar screens, and then as time went on, we realized, wow, there are many different forms of autism. So I kind of feel like that's what's happening with learning disabilities, and we can talk about that more. We've done a lot of work on identifying different subtypes of reading disabilities, so I think we're getting or acquiring a more nuanced understanding of what reading disabilities are.
All right. Thanks.
I also have a question.
Sure.
The category that you, the disability category of emotional, would that be anxiety, depression?
Yes. Yes.
And these disability categories are required for both, are they covering both 504s and IEPs, or just IEPs?
Just IEPs. 504s, a student does have to have a disability for a 504, but the sort of, the state requires for an IEP that we identify a very specific disability, and they give us a selection that we have to choose from.
Okay. They give you the menu.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, I guess the question that's raised is, you know, we know that we're seeing an increase in anxiety and depression, but the numbers don't reflect that that's taking place in our IEP process.
And many of those students can qualify for a 504 accommodation plan.
Yeah, that's what I was
I mean, you know, and not to, you know, there definitely are students with depression and anxiety where they need accommodations to, you know, extra time and check in with an adult. Those are things that wouldn't really warrant an IEP. You tend to not see, it tends to be somewhat rare to have a student with just a sort of freestanding emotional disability on an IEP. We certainly have those students, but it's not a large number.
Thank you.
So from what I'm hearing, then there may be students that are not on a 504 or an IEP, but are receiving some kind of emotional support?
Yes. That's actually, I'm glad that you raised that point, because we do have some students who don't, they don't qualify for an IEP, they don't necessarily need a 504, but they do, they do need, for example, check-ins with a counselor, which is, and perhaps that's around a difficult life event that's been going on for them or whatnot, but, you know, that's a support that we have through GenEd. So I think we're on the, okay, great. So now Emily and I, we're hoping to kind of segue into, and shift gears into talking about interventions for students with language-based learning disabilities. We did share something similar to this presentation with the CPAC a couple weeks ago, and we had great turnout for that, and we were really happy to have Stephanie Gottwald, who's been consulting with our district, join us for that parent presentation.
Yeah. And I'm glad to be a part of this conversation. I think in the last year since we last met, Christina and I have collaborated quite a bit in the area of improving reading instruction for all of our students, not just our learning disabled students, because ultimately, if we can have a good plan in place for strong instruction for all, we will meet the needs of our most struggling students. So I'm excited to share with you some of that work that we've done, and then where we're going from there. So this year, a lot of early elementary work happened. We had data meetings at Breznerhan and Mullen. These occurred by grade level for about an hour at a time, and we would dive deep into our data and, you know, make instructional decisions based on that. So a data meeting, say at the early grades, would look like teachers would be there, principal would be there, I would be there. We would review what our benchmarks are for that time in the year, and we were really looking at very discrete skills, not just the three testing periods of the year, but what skills build to those. So in October, what skills should we be hitting? In November, what skills should we be hitting? And so that we could be preventative in meeting a student's needs. Those were very beneficial. We plan to continue those. We've had data meetings in the past as well, but we had a more focused effort this year. More specifically, Dr. Gottwald, who was mentioned earlier, has been consulting with us on a number of literacy issues. She is, she was co-director of the Tufts Reading Center for many years, and worked closely with Dr. Mary Ann Wolf, who's a world-renowned dyslexia expert. She lives in our backyard in Amesbury, but she herself travels the world consulting. She's in South Africa today. But, so it's really a pleasure to work with her, and we've learned a lot. And one of the ways we've done that is through case studies. So we'll have our interventionists, our special ed teachers, come together, bring a case and the data that goes along with that, and take a look with her about what that tells us about the student profile. So she also worked with our teachers and with us in terms of recognizing what the criteria are for different reading profiles, and how you can recognize that in their diagnostic data, and then what type of instruction connects to that profile. So So we'll have our interventionists, our special ed teachers come together, bring a case and the data that goes along with that, and take a look with her about what that tells us about the student profile. So she also worked with our teachers and with us in terms of recognizing what the criteria are for different reading profiles and how you can recognize that in their diagnostic data, and then what type of instruction connects to that profile. So very specific PD for some of our most struggling readers. And that, that helped a lot of our educators also feel very confident with the next steps to take with those students. The next slide shows what those four profiles were that we talked about under the umbrella of dyslexia. So there's the phonological deficit, which is the, kind of the classic dyslexic that has been on the books for many years. This is the student that struggles with phonemic awareness early on. And a lot of phonology can be addressed in very early ages and could be secure by age nine. So that's where we talk about early intervention and the importance of that and access of that for all students, not just those on IEPs. The naming speed deficit was one that was newer in the research and newer for us to understand, that there could, and, and so we had additional diagnostics in place this year to help us identify students with this need. And typically, these students show slow fluency, but it, it, it shows itself in many other ways throughout their learning. An oral language deficit isn't necessarily dyslexia, but it's a student who has gaps in oral language vocabulary, could be lack of exposure as well, and is also behind, but not due to dyslexia. And then those with a working memory deficit also have struggles in learning to read because the working memory plays such a strong role in learning to read. And then there are combinations of these profiles. So most students have some kind of combination. And what's considered a profile and, and of itself is a combination of one and two, that's called a double deficit. So we would take our case studies and we would compare them to these profiles and we would make instructional recommendations based on that, all data-driven.
We wanted to provide you with an overview of some of the professional development that's gone on this year. This isn't an exhaustive list of professional development. For example, it doesn't include some of the individual professional development that teachers have participated in with respect to reading, but this was kind of the more systematic district-wide PD. So as Emily had mentioned, Dr. Gottwald has been working with us and she did some professional development work with pre-K through two around the science of reading. And then as Emily was just mentioning, around the four subtypes of dyslexia, that has been, Dr. Gottwald has worked with all special education teachers and interventionists as well at every level, high school, has high school happened, small, including high school, around those subtypes of dyslexia, the evaluations that we really need to do as a district to kind of get it, get that information that we need and what interventions are appropriate for what subtypes. The, we're using a program called Language Exclamation Mark. And the program consultant has been on-site with grades five and eight, engaged in teacher collaboration. And then also, and this is what I think, you know, is really exciting, we're, we've really been focusing on vertical alignment. So the program is, is also called Language Live, is sort of a different permutation of it. But we're trying to pull that up to the high school because the high school folks have expressed some interest in that. So we've given them some professional development and they just got, already got going with it. And then earlier this year, Dr. Gottwald did a two-day training for mostly Brezner folks on an intervention called REVO, which is really designed for younger years and has an intense focus on fluency work, which is something that Emily and I both felt was, was needed. And you can talk about Keys to Literacy.
Sure. And before I do, I'll just, I just want to add a little bit to language. That's a program that we're using with our most, it's our most intensive intervention that we have in place for dyslexic students and language-based learning disabilities. So we expanded that this year to grade five after one year in the middle school. And our initial results are very promising. Last year's results were promising, which is why we expanded. But we're seeing students not only make progress, but make accelerated progress, which is what we look for, is that they are getting closer to catching up to grade level. And, and so we look at that data very closely and, and we're seeing good growth there. And the students are becoming more independent. So in having it in grade five this year, we're expanding it to grade four for next year and up through grade nine. And, and so there's access at earlier points for students. And with Keys to Literacy, this is a, these are research-based instructional routines that, that help teachers teach all students, but they're incredibly important for those on IEPs as well. And, and it helps break down comprehension and vocabulary in ways that students can really take the text, anything read, said, or done is what we consider a text, to the, to very high critical thinking levels. So that's available throughout Mullen, not only available, but in practice. Yes?
With this accelerated progress that you're seeing, do you anticipate any of the out-of-placement students of those twenty-seven who potentially could be at Landmark or a program addressed for reading and literacy issues, to anticipate once we reach a certain point that we might be able to return some of those students?
Why don't we, we have examples where students were considering, do you want to speak to that?
The short answer is yes. Yeah, the short answer is yes. And I think, you know, what Emily is alluding to is the fact that we've had some parents who have been very concerned, understandably, right, about their child's progress. And we've come together, the, the IEP team has come together and put some of these interventions in place. And, you know, we've, we've seen progress. And, and in some cases, it's parents, I believe, who have been concerned enough that they really, you know, feel like maybe outplacement is, is warranted. In terms of bringing students back, I think expanding some of this up into the high school puts us in a, in a position, again, doing that vertical alignment so that we're really kind of consistent. And then again, with some of this professional development, our special ed teachers are hearing the same, you know, doing a deep dive, kind of, you know, really getting their hands dirty in terms of understanding these different profiles. So that, that's the goal, definitely.
We've continued ongoing professional development in these areas. So reciprocal teaching, self-regulated strategy development is our approach in writing in grades three to five. We attended, a number of our educators attended two different conferences. The Dyslexia Association Conference was at Harvard Medical, I believe, and we had a number of teachers go to that with Nadine Gob, was, who was the featured speaker. And they came back very enthusiastic to share what they had learned. And then we were lucky enough to have the National Conference of the IDA near us. So many of our leaders and our teachers went to that as well for a multi-day event in the fall.
Can I ask, when you say PD, so, because there were just three things, I think I saw that grades three, four, and five were getting, the Keys to Literacy, the, what's it, S D?
Reciprocity, S R C, yeah.
So everyone's getting that?
Right. Those are, those are, those are in place for all educators, yeah.
All educators, so all students, like?
Right.
So we have like a standard vocabulary?
Right.
Approach?
Yes, yes, in the last two years.
And a standard writing approach?
Yes.
Great.
Yes, yes, that's it. We're trying to be much more aligned and systematic in that regard. And, and that's a transition into our general ed intervention refinement, sure.
Pause for one second. Shaun, that would be another great community forum, like this is what we're doing with. We've been talking about having nights where we discuss things going on in the schools, like it was kind of an open.
Yeah.
It sounds like if that's, that universe will be really.
Better communicated to the community.
Interesting to, so people would know that'd be great to have.
Happy to, yeah.
Next fall.
Right. Yeah, that's spring.
Thank you, sorry.
All right, so in our, at Brezner, we have Title I funding, and that supports most of our reading, early intervention for students who are not on IEPs. Our goal is early identification, early intervention, and prevent future reading difficulties. So this, this Title I group studied a book called Ten Success Factors by Susan Hall, looking at intervention, building a common language, seeing how we could further refine the intervention that we're offering. And with that, combined with our work with Dr. Gottwald, we knew that we needed to better utilize some of our diagnostic assessments. So we have a lot of screening assessments and we do a lot of progress monitoring, but we, in some cases, needed to know more about why a student was struggling reading. And so we, we learned a lot more about how to use the CTOP for that purpose and even our DIBELS. We, we also looked at refining our existing intervention to be more specific to our most struggling cases. So, so we had individual consultation to modify their lessons. And a tool that's been available in the past to students on IEPs, we expanded to general ed students, which is Learning Ally, which is essentially audiobooks. We, we, it's incredibly important that everybody's on the same page. So our work in literacy expands to our leadership as well. We worked closely with our principals, also studying that same book on intervention, building a common language. We met over seven study group sessions to think about how does that apply to our schools and our school goals. We also looked at, we always look at data analysis at the school level and, and trends. And last year, I don't know if you remember our conversation about bumping up our, our standards on the DIBELS from the fortieth percentile as a cut score to the seventieth. So we did work on that quite a bit this year. And that really brought our conversation to how can we strengthen our tier one? And, and so we worked with leadership on that. They also were part of PD with Stephanie Gottwald, and we did our literacy vision planning for the year ahead. Principals joined me on collaborative walkthroughs in addition to the district-wide walkthroughs that we did with Shaun. And our purpose in those walkthroughs was to get a sense of what literacy instruction was in place and what needs we might have in professional development. Each year, there's a Title I conference called CASE that we also attend. Oh, this is me, sorry. So the, this fall, there was a new law passed that perhaps you're already aware of, that is, that the state will issue guidelines on early screening for dyslexia. So the, DESI has not yet released their guidelines, and we don't anticipate seeing those guidelines in the next year. We think we're a year out from having those guidelines. However, I think we're a bit ahead of the curve in that we've instituted some screenings ourselves, we'll see if they fit, but under Stephanie Gottwald's guidance. So we did have a screening this winter for the first time in addition to our DIBELS that rounded out what a dyslexia screener might look like. And we did, it was interesting to have this new data to consider. Next year, we, we are moving to a new addition of DIBELS, which also includes a dyslexia screening component if, so we'll be using that as well. We participated in a research study with Boston Children's, run by Nadine Gob, who was previously mentioned. And how many, do we have four classrooms?
I believe so. It was about sixty students that participated in the study.
And it was a validity study. So this is hopefully going to be a digital app that helps screen students for dyslexia. So we were part of that research study, which was interesting for all of us. And collaboration.
We, we also have been really focusing on collaborating both internally and externally. So we've been thinking a lot about transitions from grade to grade and school to school. And so an example of that would be earlier this year, the Brezner Special Education Team and the Mullen Special Education Team had some time to meet and talk about student profiles who were moving up from grade three to grade four. We also have really been trying to focus on having someone from the receiving school attend the IEP meeting of a, of a child who will be coming to the new school. And Emily and I have participated in the Special Education Advisory Group at Boston Children's Hospital, part of their learning disabilities program that meets twice a year. And a number of districts have been invited to that, and it's really an opportunity for us to speak and kind of collaborate with the folks at Children's Hospital. We, we have some responsibility for students at private schools in Newburyport, so really that would be the IC, who are on IEPs. And Joan Sullivan and I have, over the past couple of years, have worked really, really closely around kind of providing the IC with professional development when appropriate and working collaboratively to make sure that those students are receiving appropriate services. And then, oh, I'm sorry.
What do you mean we have responsibility for spent students at IC?
So I can, I can, I'm happy to share the DESE advisory with you because it's really very complicated. It's called proportionate share. So one of the grants that we get, the 240 grant, the big grant for special ed, the IDEA grant, every year, we have to do this very complicated computation that looks, that takes a percentage of that grant and requires that we spend it on students who attend private school within the district who, who have IEPs. I can, I can get you all the data. It's actually, it's, it's really interesting. So it requires that we collaborate with the private school to determine how those funds are used. They can be used for professional development, they can be used for, can be used for services, it can be used for, you know, to let them.
Is it based on number of students identified in terms of this formula?
Exactly, yes.
Does it also involve the charter school?
No.
So is it just IC?
Correct, yes. It's just private, so not the, not the preschools or, you know, not that, but yeah. And, and it's interesting because in a district, you know, you can imagine other districts that have a much higher number of private schools, what that would, what that would look like.
Sorry, go ahead, Angela.
Proportionate share is part of all the federal grants. So that applies to Title II, Title III, Title IV, all the federal grants.
And if things don't go well, like for them at another school, we're still on the hook for their basic education. So we have a somewhat vested interest in making sure that RTI and those sorts of things are going well at the IC.
Right. And also, those students, many of them in grade eight, come to the high school.
Right.
So it's, it's also important in that sense. Yeah, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to share that with you.
Thank you.
Oh, and then we're also going to be engaging in some regional collaboration, starting tomorrow, with the Essex County Curriculum Leaders.
This is a regional group that has come together to, the regional curriculum leaders have said, you know, we're struggling, we've done all this work in literacy, we're only seeing our data budge a little bit. And we think as leaders, we need to have much more information on what we can do to move students forward. That's really exciting because what it means is that we'll, we, we and our principals will be talking with other principals, and they're bringing in some great speakers from different universities as, as presenters of literacy for leadership. So it starts tomorrow, but we're anticipating three days in the next school year as well that we'll attend. We're going to continue work with Dr. Gottwald. That's been very helpful for us in taking a lot of these steps forward and targeting professional development for teachers in certain programs and interventions. Dr. Nadine Gob, as part of our collaboration with the research project on the validity study, agreed to come and speak to our teachers at our Professional Development Day in September.
At the Brezner.
At the Brezner, yeah, for two hours on the brain and how the brain works when it reads, which is exciting. Then the next slide is, you know, when we, when we spoke last year, we talked about really what is our goal for our readers. We really should have ninety percent of our students in each of our early elementary grades hitting their reading benchmarks. That needs to continue to be our goal, and that's what we're working towards. So our end-of-year data is almost available. It'll be available in about a week. But we have made gains this year, but we need to continue to work in this feedback loop of data, PD, reflection, leadership, support, in order to keep moving that, towards that goal. So the next slide is probably too tiny to, okay, you can see it. So in our, in our thinking for next year, our professional development will happen in a much more grade-focused way. We're going to be working in partnership with myself and with these different consultants to really. to really specify the professional development needed for teaching students in grades K and 1 and, um, teachers in grades 2 and 3, teachers in grades 4 and 5. That would precede one of those data meetings that, um, I was speaking about. So that teachers arrive at the data meetings ready to look at their data and, um, and knowing what to look for, um, followed by implementation support. So in this process, we would identify small instructional changes that could be implemented immediately. And in-class consultation is the best way to support teachers in learning because you can see in action what's happening and give feedback immediately. So, um, we want to provide that through our con, through our, um, consultants and with my help as well. And then we're going to keep our leaders learning through this Essex County Reading Network as well as, um, our study group meetings together. Uh, so, so this feedback loop will never end. And, um, even if we reach this 90% goal next year, we're going to keep this feedback loop in place. Um, I, I would, um, I'll be back in the fall to report out on our data. Yeah, and, um, and we'll be talking about how all of these impact change, not just for our most struggling readers, but for all of our readers.
Forgive me if I, if I zoned out and missed this. Um, the, the reading goal is, can you define, is it that is getting at or above grade level reading?
Yes, so we define it with a number of factors, um, based on norm-referenced tests. You know, so take DIBELS, we would take the, um, cut scores for that. And, um, and students who make that cut score of what's considered core or benchmark above that would be hitting, hitting the mark. We also have less formal measures like our Fountas and Penel Benchmark Assessment, which is untimed, but gives us a sense of their comprehension. Um, we have, uh, we have star 360, yes, which gives us other comprehension levels. Um, and we have in the works too, which I didn't mention, um, but maybe you've discussed already at school committee, but we're working with, um, a consultant on analytics. And we're going to have a lot of this analytics digitally to be viewed by teachers, um, side by side to make these decisions. So the criteria is skill-based. It's, um, and it's specific by grade level.
And, um, given that you're sort of putting together what these criteria are, it, it kind of begs the question, where do you think we are right, right now?
I'd like to tell you in one week. Um, I think we are, um, we're further away than I'm comfortable with. So, um, and, and part of that is that we've raised the bar, but the bar needs to be raised because that is the level that our students need to perform at to meet standards.
From the 40th to 70th percent.
From the 40th to the 70th percentile. So we, on average, are making 65%. And, but it varies grade level to grade level.
Is part of this, um, increase, like going back to the Common Core Lexile bump? And so I only ask that because that could be a, become over years, a substantial, uh, economic piece. We start buying grade levels worth of new text, more complex text, or moving them down years and then having to buy stuff for the older grades.
It does in terms of referring to meeting standards, for sure. Like if you're going to read a complex text, then some of your reading skills have to be so automatic that you can put all your cognitive energy into the comprehension and the understanding of that and nothing towards the decoding piece. So, um, at the same time, I think using norm-reference tests allows us to compare across the country to other peers and see that, um, there are, it's, you know, what, what is typical for a six-year-old to be able to do.
I guess I was thinking more instructionally, like are we looking at over the years where our texts?
Investing in our texts, yeah. And we have, we have, when the first Common Core came out, we did invest in getting, um, classroom texts that were, um, suggested in appendix, I think it would be B or C.
Yeah.
Um, and so that we had the exact texts they were telling us to consider as examples. Um, yes, raising the rigor for sure.
Do you have questions?
Um, so I have a couple of questions, maybe a comment and a question. Your comment is, all of this stuff looks fabulous. It's wonderful and very exciting about it. But I want it to be next week. As a school committee, we don't just take a look at the hard work that everybody does. We know all our staff, our faculty, we're, we need to know what the return on our investment of your time is. So it's very important for us to get the data along with the descriptions. And it's a little, I feel a little bit like we got half the message today. Uh, so I look forward to that information. I know you're going to do a presentation next year or next fall. Part of it is a tiny thing, but I think, um, and this is also for Sean and for Angela, we need to take a look at how we time things so that we do have a full story to tell.
And I'd be happy to come back before fall and just talk about that.
Especially when you're talking about good news like this, good stuff.
That's, that's good feedback though, because perhaps in hindsight, you know, the June 17th, I don't know if the data, if your analysis would have been ready by the following meeting, but it's certainly something to think about for the future.
This is where, where we need to make an effort to try and bring it together so that we can see and we can say, okay, this is all very good, but how do you know you're successful?
Right.
And right now, the answer is wait till next week.
Right, yeah. Well, how about at a, at a minimum, I'll provide the data, uh, results from the year to, in a report form.
Sure.
Yeah.
That'd be awesome. So the, the second question, and perhaps is a very naive question. Chapter 272, how much are we getting funded for that? I thought so. I thought so.
Maybe we'll be surprised. The state could determine some funds, right?
I love your positivity.
Yeah.
Yes, naively.
Yeah.
Can I just ask, like, I love all this too, but I'm just wondering, on a year-to-year basis, are you looking at kind of organizationally, like where we're devoting resources as far as like staff? And are there opportunities to maybe, you know, if we're not moving the needle, then may, you know, maybe we need more reading intervention people and maybe we're cutting back on paras as long as we're meeting everyone's IEP needs? Is that done on like a, a year-to-year basis? I'm sure it is, I'm just.
I think more done with the principals and you want to speak to the IEPs, Jen?
Um, well, I can kind of, I can speak to that generally. In past years, I know recently, um, we've added, I think, and I don't, my timing is probably off, but within the past couple of years, like two to three years, I know we've added a halftime reading position at the high school. We've added, um, a reading position at the NOC as well. So quite frankly, I, I think that we felt like that was a gap. I, I think that we were seeing students who needed some intensive remediation in special ed, you know, tier three at those levels, and we, we really needed more staffing. I think we're in a good place, um, with respect to that now. Um, but that's something that, that, that we definitely take a look at really closely every year. And I hear you, I, I hear you about, you know, our instructional assistants are wonderful and amazing. I think that, um, you know, in the future, there may be opportunities to kind of look at, you know, staffing and, and roles and, and whatnot and, um, along those lines.
And some of the study we did with that book that I mentioned, um, spoke directly towards efficiencies and, and getting more specific with interventions so that, um, um, there are lots of ways to break down with existing staff, um, to better meet the needs of students in, in groups. So just looking at more creative ways of doing that.
I want to also say that while I, I'm sure you do, your team does a lot of work with individual students and their needs one at a time, I really appreciate the, the amount of focus you're putting on to tier one instruction and coaching the teachers because that's where the biggest impact we can have as opposed to trying to get it student by student if we can improve the, the initial method.
Collaborating on this work just makes sense and, um, it's, it's what's moving us forward.
Great.
Yeah, I think Emily's sick of me by now, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next item on the agenda is the second reading proposal of the school committee calendar.
Motion to approve the school committee calendar.
Second.
Any further discussion, gentlemen, on the school committee calendar, which has been seconded?
Did we, did we talk about, even last week, we didn't?
That was the first.
I mean, I think we're.
Everybody want, everyone hold all the dates? Oh, the question was the January 6th.
It's been changed.
Okay.
Great.
There is no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Uh, to the Assistant Superintendent's report. I just, for, for everybody, so we should mention this at the beginning, I mean, there will be an executive session. After this move, we will not be coming back in. And we'll make the motion, but I just wanted to let everybody know. Sorry, Dan.
That's okay. Okay, I'm going to give you several updates. I talked to you last time about the large number of curriculum writing proposals that we had on the table since we last met. I was able to meet with all of the principals and we were able to prioritize all of those, um, proposals as well as I met with Billy Donigan, uh, the consultant we've been working with around skills-based education. And, uh, together we developed a rubric for the teachers to follow this summer as they do the curriculum writing. So it's a template that aligns with all of the work that's happened in the first cohort. So whether you were part of that cohort, um, you're, that, those peo, those teachers, guidance is a little more specific, but we connected some guidance for the teachers who have not been in the cohort yet so that the curriculum writing they do is starting to connect to the larger work. So we're excited about that, um, moving into the work this summer. We also, um, had a NEF partnership grant meeting and approved the grants for the fall already. I, um, had the opportunity since we last met, we had the ribbon cutting for the mind, the Jaclyn Stewart Bennett mindfulness and wellness space. We've had the two STEM expos for our elementary schools, one at the Breznerhan, one at the Mullen, both very successful. Today, I had the opportunity to go to an end-of-the-year celebration for kindergarten classroom. That was just adorable. And I thank every parent of the students there. I, I thank Mrs. Grishini for inviting me. Um, but it started with a slide presentation of the students' picture on the first day that they came through the door. And today, it was just, it was really great to see how they've grown throughout their kindergarten year. And, um, and we also had some professional development today that was a collaboration between the middle school and high school on algebra and aligning our practices there and the skills that we are going to expect the competencies in. So it's been a busy, busy time, but all really good things happening.
Great. All right. Superintendent.
I have, um, a few items that I'll, I'll touch upon and then just a couple of other activities that I had the opportunity to be part of. I believe a parent emailed, uh, the school committee regarding a few weeks, I would say about, maybe about a month ago, on a J1 visa, um, exchange student. Uh, my recommendation for that, um, would be to accept that student under the J1 visa. Uh, J1 visa is a little bit different than an F1 visa. And then what I would recommend is as we move into next year, to kind of look at a policy around, you know, J1 and F1, uh, exchange students coming into the district. J1 visa, my experience has been, this is a, um, an exchange program. It's international and we utilized a J1 visa exchange through the Rotary, uh, when I was an administrator in Beverly. So that's kind of why I'd like to accept this student under that because I believe there's an opportunity for us to expand, uh, a J1 exchange program um, through our Rotary where we would accept a J1 visa student here and then, um, give an opportunity possibly for a senior, graduating senior, to take a gap year and then do, uh, an exchange that way. So in my, at this, you know, time, I would recommend that, uh, well, I'm going to accept a J1 visa and then I would recommend that we take a look at a policy going into next year. But I just want to make the school committee aware of that. Good news on the COOPA, um, the Community Prevention Commission, Community Prevention.
Preservation.
That's a whole nother, uh, topic.
That's a different community.
That's a different community. Um, great news though, um, going to phase, phase three and phase four, uh, working with Steve Burcom and all of the work that he's done in the city. Um, so that's, you know, a, a really exciting news and important news. One last item, you know, is Nancy and I, along with our technology, um, and we're going to get some numbers, but we're looking, um, to be requesting funds to our building and technology fund for the NOC-Mullen. Uh, and we'll give specific numbers, uh, we'll send that out to the school committee, uh, regarding upgrades for technology. So that, that will be coming, um, in the next few, you know, the next few days or next week um, as we move forward on that. But you'll be seeing that, uh, as we move forward. Just some other activities, I, you know, I want to go back to the Washington trip. In the sense for the eighth graders, what was, uh, great to know is of the thousands of students who visit DC, um, that, you know, our eighth graders, according to, um, Mr. Marcos, one of the assistant principals, that, um, they were noted for their behavior, being respectful. Um, many of the different museums in locations that our students were at, um, we got a lot of accolades on their behavior, their respect. And I think that that's also part of, um, you know, not only the, the experience, but, um, just want to credit the teachers and the students and their parents for representing Newburyport Public Schools, uh, in such a positive way. All of the senior activities, uh, you know, there, there's just so many, but it's just really about, uh, rich in tradition. Um, and I had the opportunity, I want to thank the senior class for inviting, uh, central office staff and, and myself to many of those events. It was a great experience and I want to thank the class of 2019 for being, um, you know, ju- just a great class. But also, you know, in my transition into Newburyport, they really, the seniors, uh, accepted me and allowed me to participate in a lot of their activities and I want to thank them. We had a great graduation. The other impressive piece, we talk about community here in Newburyport at scholarship night, over $300,000, um, by various community members and various families, was, uh, donated, uh, as scholarship, another great tradition. And I had two wonderful opportunities, the Country Study Buffet, which was great too, we talked about this in Joint Ed, where it's part of learning about different cultures uh, throughout the world. And this, the last piece of this project was the students got to select a favorite food from every country, um, that they were representing. And the parents and the students presented a buffet. And obviously they know me pretty well because they invited me to the buffet in second grade and I had a wonderful.
Found all of our invitations in Sean's office today, by the way.
Uh, it was great and, you know, um, it's Callahan and, and Ms. Gengemi, uh, thank you for inviting me and, and the others, the second grade teachers. And then also another great tradition here is Mr. Cole and all about is the Mullen Fund Foundation and first grade books distribute, uh, distribution to the first graders where we incorporate the first grade, the parents fill out, uh, information regarding their child and it's incorporated into a story. And, um, that increases, um, you know, the, the idea of that is making reading fun. Um, so when we were handing out, um, those books, it was a lot of excitement. That was, it was just awesome for the first graders, uh, to receive those books. June 17th, um, we have Billy Donigan who's coming in. I thought it would be great for her to come to school committee, um, depending on her flight when she comes, uh, comes in on the 17th. But we'd like to have Billy Donigan kind of present some of the work that she's doing and where we're looking to take that skills-based, uh, instruction as a district. And I think having her expertise here would be beneficial. Um, and then the other piece. And then the other piece is Burlington Superintendent, Dr. Eric Conti, is also on the docket right now to come in on the seventeenth and to talk about their process of, you know, late start and their successes. And he's someone that we've been talking to throughout the year, but I think it would be important for him to not only present, but also give an opportunity for school committee to ask, you know, a lot of those different questions that they've already been through. So I think that would be a great way to kind of end our last school committee meeting. And then obviously with some of the other issues that we deal with. That's what I have for today. Superintendent report.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports. Joint Ed met today and we were basking in the glow of having submitted the budget at graduation. And we talked about, you know, some of the things that were going on in the district. It was, it was a good, very collegial meeting. We also discussed the district's response to the incident at the high school that has been in the newspapers. It was very helpful. And we also actually had a really helpful discussion for the members about the, sort of the background to the class rank decision that we made and the valedictorian, salutatorian in response to some of their questions. It was a very useful discussion. So I think that that's it. Finance?
Yeah, we met last Tuesday, May twenty-first. Three things on the agenda. We went over the current expense report for the FY nineteen budget as of May twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, and the current spending at that time was ninety-two point six percent, which includes all encumbrances for operation of plant, sped, tuition, transportation, legal lease and licensing agreement. So the budget's in good shape as we look toward the end of the year. We also went over revolving account updates, which included the following. On transportation, we have a little over twenty thousand in the revolving account. School lunch, fifty-eight hundred, as was mentioned in one of the last meetings, I think we do anticipate a transfer for that account before the end of the year. School building maintenance, thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars, which is targeted for summer support. Pals revolving, which involves the preschool, there's a hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars there. Kindergarten revolving, two hundred ninety-three thousand. Athletic revolving, which includes fees, gate receipts for things like hockey, football and basketball, a hundred ninety-one thousand. And in the surrogate breaker program, seven hundred thousand dollars. And finally, we did have a transfer that I'd like to bring to the full committee's attention for a vote. It involves the following, eighteen thousand four hundred forty-four dollars going from athletic transport to officials. This is for additional officials required. We also had a transfer of two thousand one hundred seventeen dollars from ice time to game expense. Again, needed additional funds for remaining games due to the success of some of the spring sports teams. And last, three thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars and sixty-two cents from phys ed equipment maintenance to phys ed equipment purchase. This is to basically purchase equipment that's no longer repairable. So the total transfer is twenty-three thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. It was recommended unanimously by the finance subcommittee back on May twenty-first. Is there a motion to approve?
Sub move? Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Any discussion questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Policy.
Can I ask a question?
No, sorry.
There was talk about the AD coming in to talk to us. Did that happen and I missed it or, because I knew he couldn't come the night that he was going to come to talk about fees or?
Correct. So what I just put down on my little report here, he's coming to the finance subcommittee, which is on the eighteenth, but I will touch base with our faculty, maybe kind of give an overview of some of the work.
He's coming to that, that's all. I was just curious. I knew it was talked about. I was just checking on that.
Yeah, he's coming on.
Do you have a roll schedule to follow or something?
Yes.
And superintendent evaluation?
I have received zero percent of your evaluation so far.
And mayor do?
Mayor do the fifteenth.
Thanks for the reminder.
Well, Sean, how about you, Lon?
Yeah. I was going to ask for the date, but I was glad somebody else.
Yes, yes. Your holiday.
I just also wanted to talk about that, not to take away from the very exciting week and graduation and all of the events that occurred, but, you know, it was very disappointing to learn of the anti-Semitic incident that occurred at the IB celebration on Wednesday that wound up in the paper. I commend the Andy Wolfe and Superintendent Gallagher for their immediate response and working with the students, their families, and implementing a, you know, restorative justice procedure. But it became, you know, of concern that another incident occurred in our school system. So today, we organized a follow-up meeting that consisted of the superintendent, principal, vice principal, Angela, our assistant superintendent, myself, human rights committee, two city counselors, the SRO, school resource officer, Rabbi, what was I saying?
Resnick? I was there.
Andy.
Andy and I.
And Andy Eggman from U Services. And, you know, Sean gave an update in terms of the incident and the response. And then we had just an open conversation about what we can do to support efforts that are happening at the high school in terms of improving the school climate, school culture. They have a team that's doing that, surveys they talked about, they've implemented. I think of the two incidents that occurred, one off-school, one on-school, in the past several months, what I think was most impressive to me as mayor was the fact that we're obviously making an impact because students reported immediately. They knew the language was inappropriate, the actions were inappropriate, and they reported it. But, you know, we still, listening to the collective discussion, we still have issues in our community. And so Sean presented a model that had been used in Beverly High School, so we're taking a look at that, talking about the speaker series next fall in terms of how one component of that could include more in terms of understanding diversity and tolerance and that level, adding something else to the open houses for each of the schools. So there might be a little bit, an extended period of time where all parents go into the auditorium and listen to a conversation about responsibilities, about language and actions. And, you know, we look at the potentially equity counselors, is that what you call them?
Equity coordinator.
Coordinators who would do the restorative justice, our adjustment counselor doing that now, and leaving the disciplinary procedures to the principals and sort of looking at, you know, how we can, you know, really enhance this model and also begin working with the younger grades too, because there certainly are situations that are occurring at a younger level. And it certainly is disheartening to hear the Rabbi talk about some of the issues that his community is dealing with in terms of anti-Semitism. But it's not just that, it's LGBT, it's, you know, it extends further than that too. So we have more work to do, but I think people need to understand that we also are moving the culture of our district forward in really positive ways. And the fact that students are willing to step forward and report situations that occur, I think is a really good, a good sign that we're moving in the right direction. So I thank everyone who attended that meeting and there's more work to come.
Any other comments?
Do you guys remember the woman, Emily Croto, came in about painting the skate park?
Yes.
Back in spring or fall, I guess. So I spoke to her today. She was in Peru on some sort of trip and apparently she's doing a upcycling of sneakers. So if your vans are beat, she designs all this stuff on them. I guess it's so popular that she can't do anything else, which is crazy. But so she's going to do a mock-up of what her design is going to be and give it to us by the end of this week. And we'll see what happens from there.
Thank you.
Emily Croto, C-R-O-T-E-A-U.
The whole Primadonna sneaker thing.
What's that?
We were just talking about the very modern Primadonna sneaker culture. That kids can't have dirty sneakers anymore.
I remember when having dirty sneakers was a more status.
She also said she started skating. Because of the project, she's been down there.
We're supposed to be dirty.
Can I have a motion to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, and we will not reconvene in open session?
Sub move?
Second.
Second. So I take a roll call vote.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Menon?
Yes.
Mr. DuCanto?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Ried?
Yes.
Mr. Kohler?
Aye.
And Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
I think it's five to eight, but executive session is going to blow this dollar out of my wallet and back into yours. Curse is foiled again.